The April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Planning Commission Committee of the Whole will now begin.
Good evening. Welcome to the regular virtual meeting of the City Planning Commission Committee of the Whole. Today is Thursday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. For the record, my name is Chloe McGuire, and I'm the newly elected Vice President of the Planning Commission. This meeting includes the remote participation of board members and staff as authorized under Minnesota statutes, section thirteen D point zero two one, due to the declared local health pandemic. The city will be recording and posting this meeting on the city's website and YouTube channel as a means of increasing public access and transparency. This meeting is public and subject to the open meeting law. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll to verify the presence of a quorum?
Commissioner Alper.
Present.
Commissioner Baxley.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Faola.
Here.
Commissioner Ford.
Here.
Commissioner Marwa.
Here.
Commissioner McGuire.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Rainville.
Present.
We have eight members present.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. With that, we'll move to the agenda, a copy of which was posted for public access to the city's legislative information management system, which is available at limbs dot Minneapolis M N dot gov. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Rainville. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Baxley? That, yep. Uh, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, uh, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll on the motion.
Commissioner Alper.
Hi.
Commissioner Baxley.
Hi.
Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Faola.
Hi.
Commissioner Ford.
Hi.
Commissioner Marwa.
Hi.
Commissioner Olson.
Hi.
Commissioner Rainville.
Hi.
And Commissioner Campbell, I see you've just joined us. We're voting on the agenda. Do you have a yea or nay?
Yea.
Wonderful. And that leaves us with Commissioner McGuire.
Hi.
Nine yays and zero nays.
Thank you. That motion passes and the agenda is adopted. Next on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes from the regular meeting of March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, may I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion to accept?
A motion from Commissioner Baxley. Commissioner Olson?
Again.
Thank you. Um, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, can the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Commissioner Alper.
Hi.
Commissioner Baxley.
Hi.
Commissioner Campbell.
Hi.
Commissioner Faola.
Hi.
Commissioner Ford.
Hi.
Commissioner Marwa.
Hi.
Commissioner Olson.
Hi.
Commissioner Rainville.
Hi.
Commissioner McGuire.
Hi.
That's nine yays and zero nays.
Thank you. That motion passes. Um, we have just one item on our agenda this evening, and it is a consent item, a land acquisition for eleven zero one Third Avenue South. Um, staff is Retana Sangsu Legion. Um, if anyone has any questions, um, for him, otherwise I would, um, accept a motion on the item.
I, I.
So moved.
Uh-oh, we've got.
I report.
Okay, we'll take Commissioner Ford. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, perfect, Commissioner Alper. Um, is there any further discussion on this item? Um, for this item, the mo- yes, go ahead, Commissioner Alper.
Um, ye- yes, I would, I would like to ask a few questions about this. Is this the appropriate time?
Yes, go ahead.
Awesome, awesome. Um, so I, I saw this on a previous agenda, and, um, and I apologize if this was being chatted about as I came on, but, um, you know, it was, this, uh, land acquisition by the city of Minneapolis came to us at the same meeting as, I don't have the date of the previous meeting, but it was as the same date as the Hiawatha Campus Expansion Project. And I, uh, you know, it got removed from the agenda, but I had made some notes about things that I was curious to hear. Um, so I guess I'm, I'm wondering how much square footage will the first precinct use in this building? Um, how many officers are part of the first precinct? It's, it's, uh, as far as I can tell, this is quite a large, um, space and a quite a large parking facility. Um, so I could keep going. I have a whole list. I don't know what would, what, if you'd prefer to chime in intermittently, or I could just read down my list.
Yeah. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Just for folks on the phone, my name is Retana Sangsu John. I'm a, uh, senior city planner that's assigned to review this land sale. Um, I, in a bit, I will turn it over to the project corner, uh, project coordinator, uh, Dave Ramstead, who would be better suited to answer those questions. Um, but, um, in a, at the moment, um, I, I don't, I can't answer any of those questions for you, but I know that it's still going through the land sale, um, excuse me, land use approval process in collaboration with a developer. Uh, but there's still a lot of work to be done with that, but I'm gonna turn it over to Dave here, um, who could maybe help answer those questions. So Dave, take it away.
Dave, you are muted.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Alper, thank you very much for the questions. I did jot down a couple of them as you were, uh, rattling along.
I'm, I'm happy to repeat them. I, I think, I think that, yeah, so, uh, you know, and I really looked at that. Um, I'm looking at this project in light of some of the things that I've, I've heard about the, the other project, which is in the district that I represent, and there, it, you know, both of them are right on the light rail. And I think, and it, I, what I'm trying to find out, and I'm interested in finding out, is if this land acquisition, um, and I guess I could go back into it. So again, how much square footage will the precinct, first precinct use was one of my first questions. And I could just, I give you space to respond, and then I'm happy to.
Sure.
Keep going.
Yeah, no problem. I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that Commissioners, uh, may ask. Um, this is, uh, and it's very infancy. Um, staff have been working on this, uh, for a couple of months, uh, working with the developer and, and trying to define what a proposal, uh, might shape into. And it's, so the, the square footage is in flux, but we're probably looking at somewhere around thirty-five thousand square feet. Uh, there's, we, we're happily surprised to find that there's a mezzanine level in this building, which gives a lot of flexibility. We can remove that mezzanine, uh, in certain locations, or we can keep it, uh, for additional square footage. But, um, there's enough room in this to set up a command center for the convention center, which is really, really nice, and some other more, uh, you know, other amenities that the current facilities have for, you know, public engagement and things like that.
Is, is the thirty-five thousand square feet, is that what the first precinct will use? Or is that the total office space of the building?
Yeah, that's the total office space of the building. Uh, what the precinct will use is indetermined. Uh, there was going to have to be a space programming phase, uh, where the architects will be working closely with staff and to define what the pro, the spatial program will be, and that'll ultimately define where that square footage figure ultimately lands.
Um, do you know how big the first precinct is right now? How many square feet?
Uh, I think I do. Let me see if I have that here. Um, yeah, it's thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-one square feet.
Okay, so that's, that's a huge difference.
Yeah.
You know, and it just strikes me that they're probably, you know, thirteen thousand to thirty-five thousand is, that's big, you know?
Yeah, that's because of the.
That's awesome that this building exists. We could, you know, it sounds like, you know, again, they're not on the same agenda, but they were originally, that this could be a, a solution. They're both city-led projects, and I'd love to see a little more coordination between the two, frankly. Um, how many officers are, are part of the first precinct?
A hundred and twenty-three, uh, but I would like to address what your comments were.
Oh, sure. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Uh, that, that is an outside space number, and that is with the mezzanine. You know, where the number actually lands is one thing, but the thirteen thousand square feet of the existing facility is literally the existing precinct. We also have an additional, like, four thousand square feet of lease area. So all total, it's probably closer to, you know, eighteen, twenty thousand square feet. Um, so really what we're talking about is about a ten thousand square foot overage, and that is really kind of a float space, and the reason why we have so much additional space is because we discovered this mezzanine area. So, uh, where that, where, where the lease space, uh, I mean, where the, where the condominium space, I should say, actually ends up being, that's all in flux, and it'll be, that'll be defined by the, uh, by the space programming process.
Okay, um, uh, thank you for that. Uh, how, how many, oh, you said one hundred and twenty-three. And I guess, how many structured parking spaces are part of this land acquisition?
There are approximately a hundred and eighty, uh, parking spaces, and a lot of those will be, um, have electric chargers.
Okay.
Um, Kimberly. I'll let Commissioner Alper continue with her questions, but perhaps it would be helpful too to just talk about why this item is in front of the Committee of the Whole tonight, because there's, this is like a very preliminary step in allowing all of the additional steps in this process to happen. Um, I think, and that needs to happen to allow a lot of these more specific things to be worked out. So Dave, I'm wondering if you could maybe touch on kind of the process as a whole. I think that would be really helpful here.
Sure. Uh, Commissioners, what we're seeking tonight is we're seeking a comp plan determination to, 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 to ensure that this use is not contrary to the comprehensive plan. That's, that's pretty much it, uh, for this evening. Uh, and the reason why we're seeing this, we are developing a term sheet between the developer and ourselves that we ultimately want to take this proposal and then present it to committee and to, and to council, uh, for further vetting. Um, and then ultimately down the road, then we start to create a development agreement. And we hire our architects, and we start getting into the parts of this building we're actually gonna end up taking. So we're, we're really just in the very infancy part of this process.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And it will result in a land use application that comes before this group, both at the Committee of the Whole phase and then as a formal land use application later.
Absolutely, Commissioner, uh, yeah.
So it sounds like tonight, the planning commission's purview is to see if the land sale is consistent with the Minneapolis twenty forty plan. Is that a good summary?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Alper, do you have any more questions for Dave or staff?
You know, I'll let, um, Commissioner Olson go, and then I'll, while I ponder that. Thank you.
It looks like Commissioner Rainville had his hand up before Commissioner Olson, so I'm gonna let Commissioner Rainville go, and then Commissioner Olson.
Thank you. So, Dave, uh, you're, you're a little, your connection is a little garbled here and there, so I haven't heard everything. But, so, what's the address of this building again?
Uh, the address is, it's on the corner of, uh, it's on the corner, uh, let me get the exact address.
Eleven oh one Third Avenue South.
Okay, so it's the old Bull Tech High School.
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
I'm showing my age. And this would be part of a, of a larger development?
That's correct. Uh, the, as far as I know, the developer is seeking, uh, a hotel use for the remainder of the, of the facility, which is the, the, a large lion's share of the, of the facility.
Okay, and do, does your department consult with the police department to see if this is a good idea, if they're agreeable, or, or has that been done?
Yes, we've had some very preliminary discussions. Uh, we've taken, taken, um, um, management, uh, over to tour the very rough space, as you can imagine. Um, and so we, we, we've tried to get, you know, green lights, uh, each step of the way as our, as our thinking kind of evolves.
Sure.
Uh, now, what we'd like to do is when we have this kind of, uh, approval, and that doesn't contradict the comp plan, then we'd like to go forward and present to our, what's called the FSAM committee, to the, to the MPD, um, and then present the proposal to committee and council.
Okay, so to help me, I got one more question. Thank you for your patience. So to help me decide how to vote, if, uh, if this goes forward, it sounds like this is preliminary one step, understand, about if the, if the police department is not agreeable, what happens then?
All right, um, the police department, I mean, has to be agreeable to this, uh, to this project. And matter of fact, they will be part of the entire process through space programming to, to designing the, 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 the building, the entry, the, you know, establishing the, the parking, the, the way it needs to be. As a matter of fact, one of their very early requirements was to add a second act, means of access from the garage, because they don't wanna have a single, a single access. Um, so we, our proposal currently is to have a second ac- access that would go out the north side, out to Eleventh. Um, and, and we actually coordinated the planning commission to, uh, I'm sorry, planning, uh, the planning director, uh, on that. And, uh, so we have been trying to, uh, circle around and communicate with all the various groups, even in this very early stage.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the information.
Thank you, Commissioner Rainville.
Commissioner Olson.
Thanks. Uh, I guess I just wanted to sort of ask Retana to boil this down for us. So, um, we're really just looking at how, or if this is, um, consistent with the comprehensive plan. So what are the findings? I mean, I see your findings say that it is consistent, but you know, how do you get there just so that we can know what we're voting on?
Thanks, Commissioner Olson. Um, so, you know, as part of this, uh, item, um, you know, we're the city is required by state statute to make sure that whatever proposed use is consistent with the city's adopted comprehensive plan. So again, there's existing vacant structure right now, um,
Old reason.
With existing vacant structure with some, uh,
Well.
with some structured parking in the center, and they're, they're not gonna do like a whole, from what I understand, um, the city is gonna do some alterations and rehabbing some of the spaces to acquire that site for city use, and specifically for the part, police department. So based upon this view, purview of like, I'm looking through the lens of like, a rehab renovation project, not necessarily new construction. So even though the site is guided as Core fifty, which, um, has some minimum densities because of that policy level, I, you know, that's kind of pushed to aside, but I look towards like, uh, the, the land use component, which is public, office, and institutional. And so, uh, and that, and this proposed use is consistent with that land use policy guidance. So staff is recommending to the planning commission to find that this land acquisition is consistent with the comp plan.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Alper.
Thank you. I have, I have, um, two more questions. So, uh, uh, first of all, the first precinct is currently operating out of the City of Lakes Building, correct?
City of Lakes Building?
Is the third precinct is operating out of the City of Lakes Building? Oh, oh, sorry, apologies. Um, right, right, right. First precinct is, I have in my notes here that I'm looking at really quickly. Um, well, all right, I guess, uh, I guess I was thinking about the City of Lakes Building, um, because the, again, this was a similarly, and I guess even similarly to the third precinct, or, uh, excuse me, to the first precinct, um, was that around the City of Lakes Building, there was a huge fence erected, um, with jersey barriers, chain link, um, wrapped around it. It occupies the sidewalk and forces pedestrians into the streets. And I want to ask you, I've, I've looked at this location, eleven oh one Third Avenue South, and I, I want to know if, is there an intent to put up a similar fence at this location? And, um, obviously, I would hope not. Um, but I want to know, how will the pedestrian space, which is currently not great around this building at eleven oh one Third Avenue South, how will it be at least maintained or improved by this acquisition?
Right, those are great questions, uh, Commissioner Alper. Um, and the, the, the short answer is no, we have no intention of putting, uh, fencing around this facility. Uh, since it's a, a new buildout, um, we intend to use technologies uh, that will make it a secure space for the police, uh, and a welcoming place, uh, for visitors, uh, that can easily come into the, uh, public area and, and entry spaces. Um, the, the old, uh, precinct that you're referring to is actually at ten North Fourth Street. It's over by the, uh, it's over by the stadium garages that go over the highway. Um, and that's an old nineteen oh two fire station, so it's like a hundred and twenty years old. And, uh, and it's also using neighboring lease space, as I mentioned previously. Um, so you know, with glass, with glazing and a variety of other, uh, technologies, we will be making the facility as secure as we, as we can, that technology allows.
Yeah, I, I just am finding that hard to believe, because I, I'm trying to think of a precinct in this city which has not had a giant fence, um, put up around it, no matter the year it was built. Um, so I, I guess I'm pretty concerned about the pedestrian environment around this, um, this location, because I, I haven't seen, it, it demonstrated this care for, for people. So I, I'm gonna leave it at that with my questions and for now. Thank you.
Retana, do you wanna jump in?
Um, I think I just wanna, one, just comment, and Commissioner, I, I totally hear your concern, and I just wanna reiterate that, you know, um, we're still in the infancy process, right? Of like, especially like the site design and the treatments of the public realm. But I, rest assured, like, uh, the staff, planning staff that is assigned to the project, they will be looking at these things in terms of long-term, like, what's the treatment of the public realm? How does, uh, and the pedestrian environment and so forth? So from a long-term perspective, not necessarily like, uh, because of, um, isolated events that, that lead to certain treatments that might be hostile to pet users. So I just wanna call that out. That's the opportunity would probably be down the road when we get to that design process.
Right. I'd also like to emphasize that the current precinct, one, does not have fencing, uh, at least not in front of it, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any more questions for staff? Um, so I guess I just wanna clarify, um, it sounds like there are some concerns about the design of the space. So this is not the last time the planning commission will see this, correct? Because it is part of a larger, um, plan, so it will come back, which is when we can give specific feedback on that design, but it sounds like you have some of our feedback already. So hopefully you can work that into the planning process with, uh, the precinct as well. Is that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Rainville?
See, I'm sorry, I had to grab a phone call, uh, from council member Goodman, but, uh, I just wanna make sure that Commissioner Alper, as you understand that, that the precinct where the fencing and uh, concrete barriers are around is the third precinct.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So.
Yep, go ahead, Commissioner Alper.
Uh, thank you, thank you. Um, I appreciate it. I, I guess I have two concerns about this, and I, I don't know when is a good point to bring it forward. May I, may I speak now? Vice President.
Please.
McGuire. Um, okay, so I, I think for me, really, uh, there are two policies in the comprehensive plan, which I'm, I'm not convinced that the, that this project meets. And so I'd, I'd like to name them, if that's all right. Um, so one is policy eighteen, uh, about pedestrians, improving the pedestrian environment in order to encourage walking and the use of mobility aids as a mode of transportation. And I, I, I'm really struggling to believe that, that this, um, land use at this site will, will, at the very least, maintain the tiny sidewalk that goes around this building. So that's one. And then, um, the second one, um, is policy twenty-three, coordinated development strategy. You know, coordinating, coordinate the development of housing, businesses, and infrastructure in geographic areas where a district-wide approach has the greatest opportunity for achieving Minneapolis twenty forty goals. And I, I think, especially since it's the city who, which is leading the land acquisition effort, I just, for me, it, it's so close to the roof depot site with the Hiawatha Expansion Campus, or Hiawatha Campus Expansion Project, and I just would really like to see more coordination from within the city on these, these two projects. It's, it's not, I, I, I think a lot of things could be solved if we worked better together on, on these, on these two projects. And I'm, I'm, I think it's unfortunate that they were both on the agenda together uh, a couple of weeks, a few weeks ago, and I scribbled down, you know, notes comparing the two. But that's what, what gave me this thought is, we've got this vacant building with extra space, and I, I'd like to see more coordination so that, I mean, the city should be leading the charge on our twenty forty goals, and I'm just not seeing that right now with, with this project, and then separately with the other ones, but especially when you look at them together. That, those are my thoughts.
Oh, clarify one more time. So the third precinct, which had historically been more near the area of the Hiawatha Maintenance Facility, is temporarily located downtown. That's not the one that is being discussed tonight. So the first precinct would be relocating within downtown. Um, you know, within a few blocks of where it is currently. I just wanted to make sure. I think we've had some overlap in references to the two different precincts. So, you know, the third precinct is also going to be looking for a more permanent home, but that'll be a separate conversation. So, uh, this is a conversation about the first precinct, which would, is and would remain downtown and wouldn't be near the depot.
Yep, yep, to- totally, totally on board, but first precinct. And I, I, my, um, I believe that my statements stand in regard to the first precinct. Um, apologies for any confusion there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any final questions for staff? Okay, great. Um, I have no comments on this either. So with that, I would be looking for a motion to either, um, say this is or is not consistent with the twenty forty comprehensive plan. If anybody interested in making a motion?
I think we already have a motion from the very beginning, and I think it was Commissioner Ford.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. A old pro at this.
Not so old.
Uh, and I think we had a second as well. So with that, um, with the, is there any further discussion before the clerk calls the roll? Okay, seeing then, would the clerk please call the roll on the original motion?
Commissioner Alper.
Pass.
Pass. Commissioner Baxley.
Aye.
Mayor Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Ola.
Aye.
Mayor Ford.
Aye.
Commissioner Marwa.
Aye.
Mayor Olson. Commissioner Rainville.
Aye.
McGuire.
Aye.
That's eight ayes and one abstention.
Thank you. Um, that motion passes. Thank you, staff, for your work on that item. We look forward to seeing that in the future when it comes back to us. That concludes all of our items on this agenda tonight. Are there any staff updates this evening?
Just yet another reminder that our next meeting will be in person and you'll be receiving a lot of communications from myself or the clerk's office between now and then. Commissioner Baxley had asked at our last meeting a couple of questions about when to arrive and that sort of thing. I am planning on being in council chambers at probably four o'clock. Um, so thirty minutes in advance of the first in-person meeting. The clerk might even beat me there. So if anyone is interested in getting there quite early to get familiar with this space and with the equipment and, um, you know, even get a little bit familiar, you won't be messaging in the chat when you want to make a motion anymore, um, that sort of thing. So understanding we'll have some growing pains no matter what, but if you would like to get there early and get settled in, we will certainly be there to welcome you and show you around. Um, Commissioner Marwa or anyone else who is interested. We did confirm it's easiest if you just want to bring your bike all the way up and we'll find a conference room near chambers to store it in during the meeting. We have other long-term bike storage options, but that's the most straightforward, um, and the easiest for you all.
Thanks for checking.
Yeah. We will have parking vouchers for the hoff ramp for anyone who wants to drive in. And then we will have transit passes for anyone who is taking transit to get there. We unfortunately won't have a way to get them to you in advance of the meeting. So your inbound trip, um, you'd be responsible for until we can get you a pass. But then going forward, we can get you multiples so that your return trip for the next meeting, um, would be covered with that. So all of those reminders and plenty of others will be in some email communications, but just wanted to close the loop on a few things that came up on Monday. And I believe I had also announced on Monday that the appeal of the decision of the planning commission related to the project at six thirty-five Van Buren was going to be heard at the biz committee next week on the nineteenth. That item is actually being continued from that meeting, so there will not be any decision made at that meeting on the nineteenth. It's being continued one cycle to the May fifth meeting. Just due to a conflict in noticing, um, clarifying that the meeting will be in person. So that meeting, uh, that decision won't be made until the fifth by the committee, the biz committee.
Kimberly, I have a question about that one.
Yeah.
So you said that the zoning, uh, can't be appealed because it's state law or something, right?
It's legislative. So the quasi judicial applications are subject to appeal, which includes basically everything except a rezoning, a vacation and a comp plan amendment.
Okay, so if they were going to move forward with the project, it would look a lot different.
Well, both the rezoning and the site plan review are on the agenda. But the site plan review is on the agenda as an appeal item. So that item is a public hearing item. The rezoning is on the agenda as an action item.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So they basically would take up the decision on the site plan review first and then take up the rezoning immediately after.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Can I, sorry, can I ask a follow-up question on that, Kimberly? So for the, um, the rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment applications, we're just a recommending body for those. So there would never, they, they can't appeal a recommendation. Is that correct?
Right. So on those application types, the final decision is always made by the city council. So you can see in the staff report templates for a lot of the applications, it'll say staff recommends that the planning commission approve or deny. For, um, rezonings, vacations and, uh, comp plan amendments, it says the staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the city council that they approve or deny.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, any other updates from staff or any other members of the commission? Okay, seeing none and without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Our next planning commission meeting will be Monday, April twenty-fifth in person. And our next committee of the hall will be Thursday, April twenty-eighth. Uh, thank you, everyone. I look forward to meeting you all in person.
All right. Take care.